I beg your attention, Zoning Board of Appeals for September 17th. We'll now come to order. Please, can you have a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting?
Oh, who is she?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Woodin? Mrs. Crowitz?
Present.
Mr. McQuarrie?
Present.
Mrs. Curley?
Present.
Mr. Callen?
Present.
Mr. Gesono?
Present.
Continue. The first case this evening will be case number 9899, Bubia Street, Parcel 066-751-019. Petition of James Cartel, EDIC, to allow the use of a modernized food vehicle, retail open space food establishment greater than 25 percent on a lot in the designated court area to allow the use of an open air stance on a lot in the waterfront three districts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Peter Gesono, I'm Associate Director of Project LEED at Beyond Walls. You guys may have heard of some of our projects, the mural festivals that we've done in the past and also the other past lighting projects that we've done. We've teamed up with the city who owns the parcel. Also here with my CEO, my executive director, and Wilson, interrap from EDIC. But, we're here today for relief, we're seeking relief, to be able to use food trucks on site and also was listed, the chairman listed as well. I'm here to answer any questions you have on our petition.
Well, I'm looking at all these bushes and plants and...
Yeah.
There's nothing but hot top down there.
There's actually, it's not hot top, the parking lot's hot top, but on the site it's actually urban fill.
Actually what?
Urban fill. So there's some grass on the site.
But there's not a bush, there's nothing that looks like this. I don't even know what this is.
Absolutely not, no, that's not the existing condition. The existing conditions are just, that's just grass and brush.
But it's gonna look like this?
We hope it will look like this.
So, Peter, let me understand this. So right now you're just seeking a relief for the food truck?
That's correct.
And has nothing to do with this rendering?
Has nothing to do with the rendering, we submitted that. We want to give you folks an idea of what we're proposing. But right now, we're just here to seek relief to, in the future, be allowed to have food trucks on site. The other one, any of that listed. One, Al, my colleague, I did, you know, want to submit for the record. We do have a lot of support from our neighbors and some of butters. So, Al, if you wanted to submit those for the record, we wanted to make that available to the court.
Well, there were awful lot of cars parked there on Sunday when I was there. I mean, a lot of cars. Where were you gonna have the food trucks?
So if you look on site, one of the things that we wanted to do on site is make the site very accessible. So, there's a lot of green space on site and we want to really make that available to the general public.
I don't know where you're gonna put the trucks.
We do have on site the ability to position food trucks anywhere on site. So access roads are built to not only access the site for any service or maintenance of the site in general, but we can position the food trucks anywhere and have different types of events happening at the same time and not interfere with one another. So, in that sense, we're making the site very accessible to different types of events.
Yeah, did you remember, Mark, that we were down there looking for evidence of where there would be strike? And we couldn't find, we didn't know exactly the area that this is supposed to be kind of, oh.
So the area is, if you go down...
When you drive in, is it to the right?
And when you drive in onto the site, it's on the left.
It's on the left.
So you'll have, it's in between Pedal Cuisine and the L&amp;G Tank, right to the left of the parking lot.
So, which lane way from this?
This is supposed to be truck.
This is the water?
Right.
And Lineway is further down on my right.
I think it's behind the clock tower.
Yeah. Right behind the clock tower.
Separately from the butters, the Lynn Housing Authority.
Yeah, I have that stuff. Yep. I'll read that out. Any other questions from the board? Any other questions at this time?
Yeah, did you have something to say?
No, and just, you know, we do this for...
Yeah, can you give them their name and address, the secretaries? Your name and address?
Yeah, Alfred Wilson. 18 Mount Vernon Street, Lynn, Massachusetts. And as a step for the record, to Peter Gesono, 177 Washington Street.
I love everything you've done in the city.
Thank you.
Well, true.
Looks good, looks like it's gonna actually be something nice once it gets up and running.
Yeah, it's gonna blitz up the area.
Yeah, no, it's definitely what that area needs down there. Is there any other questions from the board right now?
Aye.
Any questions? Seeing that there are none, I'm gonna open up the floor for anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Yes, sir.
There are, there are a few letters in favor of this. One is from the Lynn Housing Authority. Dear zoning board of appeals, the Lynn Housing Authority, a neighborhood development, is in strong support of the proposal put forth by Beyond Walls to advocate, promote Lynn's waterfront, specifically as it relates to the zoning board of appeals to petition for a special food truck permit for their lunches at site 399 Blossom Street. Along with our traditional role as a housing authority in operating rental assistance program, LHAND does extensive work with the neighborhood and community to develop initiatives. Land administrative participants in the community development program, neighborhood-based projects and urban art and creative placemaking activities which improve our community in substantial ways. Beyond Walls, the lunch is exactly the type of placemaking project that has been identified to activate in the waterfront during the community input process of the waterfront open space master plan. For this reason stated above, Lynn believes this is the right project at the right time for the promotion of the city waterfront. Sincerely, Charlie Gator, selecta. The other letter is from Mia McGee. Members of the Lynn Zoning Board of Appeals are right on behalf of Beyond Walls to contact at our office in regards to the position for special food truck permit located at 399 Blossom Street in Lynn. The launch project aligns with our waterfront open space master plan and our desire to promote the Lynn Ferry Terminal at a site for the future water transportation. Since 2017, the city has collaborated with Beyond Walls for their annual street art festival and lighting installation project. We look forward to continuing to work with Beyond Walls and other organizations for continuing arts and place, making the city of Lynn. I ask that you give Beyond Walls petition for a special food truck permit at the site of the launch located at 399 Blossom Street. Sincerely, Tom McGee, man. So with that, I'm gonna close the meeting for those in favor. I'm gonna now open up the meeting for anybody in opposition. Is there anybody in opposition to this petition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing that there's none, I'll now close the meeting for anybody in opposition.
Motion to grant the petition.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Please call the roll.
Mr. Woodin?
I'm motion to grant.
Mrs. Crowitz?
Motion to grant.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant.
And Mr. Gesono?
Yes, to grant. Please grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the next case this evening is gonna be case number 9900-551 Eastern Ave. Petition of Robert St. Pierre to allow the use of an accessory structure, two-car garage on a non-conforming lot in the single-family district Iran as a nail salon, not conforming with section 9.0 of the zoning coordinates.
Can you come up?
Does he come up, the applicant?
Well, I'm trying to allow my daughter to start a business out of the garage without having to get a building, have all kinds of rent, not knowing if she's even gonna make it in the business. I'd rather try to drive to fail, to start a business out there and fail.
Where are you gonna have parking?
In our yard. We have enough parking for six cars, we only have three. So there'll be off-street parking, there'll be parking in the yard.
Well...
So you wanna take, you wanna take a conform, a two-car garage into a nail salon?
No, she's just gonna be inside the garage. Like I said, it's a two-car garage.
And you wanna make it a salon, right?
A section of it.
Oh, so you wanna just take one side and do one side?
Yeah, I moved my stuff over to one side.
So are there already, all the, all the, all the...
Electrical plugs.
MVPs are already all in there, the plumbing, the electric, all that stuff's already exists? What about bathroom?
No, house.
So they're gonna go into the house for the bathroom?
But there's no plumbing out there, right?
No, I'm sorry, not in the garage, no. Just electrical.
But she does need water.
Not for nail tech.
I...
Do you want to step up?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
So I mainly work with acrylic.
Give me your name and age, miss.
I'm sorry, so that'd be Sabrina, St. Pierre. Address 551 East Avenue. So with the acrylic nails is what I mainly specialize in. The water really comes into play at the end when you just kinda wash all the dust off. And there's two ways we could do that, kind of the old-school water basin system. You get the clean water and then the bucket where it kind of, and I can filter that out through the day. Or just kind of go over it with alcohol, that really gets away all the dirt. I don't do manicures or pedicures or anything like that. I just specialize in like nail design and art.
So it's just basically fancy, more and more designer stuff?
And it would be one girl at a time?
That was my next question, how many customers are you gonna see in a day, you figure?
Hopefully, three.
Okay. So it's very low, very low impact, right?
Yeah, it's not gonna be like typical salon, you know, cars and now three or four people have to tidy. I'm only one person. I don't think I'm hiring anyone, I don't think I'm qualified to hire anyone, so...
Like I said, with the pictures, it shows that there is adequate parking off the street. We wouldn't be impeding on the street.
Do you have a parking plan, do you have a parking plan showing that?
On the pictures, it shows the driveway. They had told me to take some pictures of the garage, of the house, and I took some of the driveway to show where people would be parking.
But don't you think we'd be setting a precedence here? How can I say yes to you and know that everybody else on Eastern Avenue that has a garage that wants to put a business in?
Well, there are a couple of businesses right next to our house. There's a chiropractor across the street, two houses over.
Do you care if it goes down?
Five houses down from us.
Which would lead me to my next question, do you plan on doing a sign? Are you, are you gonna reconstruct, are you gonna pull a permit, reconstruct the garage in anyway? So you're just gonna keep it at, just kinda make up the inside a little bit?
Adequate lights?
No sign, no, no, nothing?
No, we wouldn't be putting out a sign.
I would probably put it, probably through social media, so that's how I get a lot of my clients and that's where I do a lot of my advertising. If you love, I just kinda post pictures of the nails that I do and, you know, people contact me.
This is, this is gonna kinda be an hard question. I'm gonna lob it out there, even though I am on TV. How'd you get here? How did you get here? How would anybody even know about, are you opening, pulling a license for this?
No, I was checking on that and I was glad that I did, that, I don't remember who I talked to in the building, inspected, but he said, "You're in an R1 zone." And I said, "She can't even do nails in her room." He said, "No, not as a business." And I said, "Okay, I don't wanna do a nails in the room because it smells." I'd rather she does it out in the rough. But that's how we basically got here, that I had talked to somebody and found out we can't just let her do it, we need to come down and see the board of appeals.
Any other questions of the board?
Yeah, would you mind putting a time limit on that if the board has granted permission?
Who's granting a time limit?
Time...
I think he's kinda, I think he's kinda, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Callen, I think he's kinda going down the road of what's, what if there was like six months to a year to see where this goes, because I could see it being, starts off with all the best intention, one girl at a time, you're doing two to three girls a day. Then there's four girls working for you and it becomes completely off the wall.
No, that's not, I wouldn't...
But you understand, am I right in understanding the same?
Let me explain it this way. We looked into finding places for Sabrina to move into. Rents were quite high, all the insurances and everything would be quite high. Everything would be covered under myself at the house.
Okay, but that doesn't answer my question.
I'm sorry.
So he, he's basically asking, would we be open to like maybe a lot of six months of using the garage?
Oh, whatever.
Or however timeframe, to see how it goes.
This is what I was bringing up to, I don't know how long it's gonna take her to take off and be able to move into an establishment on her own.
Because that is the goal.
Hold on before you actually finish answering that question. I'm just gonna let that question marinate for a minute or two. Let's see where this goes and let's, you know, 'cause there could be other stipulations that come up. Let's see, the rest of the room could be your neighbors, which they're probably not in opposition. So let's, I'm just gonna let that marinate for a sec, let's see where this goes and kinda, and kinda... Is there any other questions of the board?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
So I know nail salons require approval from the board of health. So if you're not pulling a license, you're not, would you get approval from the board of health?
Um, I can only answer to that question. Do you, do you mean like having someone come inspect the area, make sure it's got the proper? I mean, I'm open to setting that up if that's a requirement.
No, I understand.
I just, I typically nail salons, like you currently, the state board would come by and ever so often, and kinda just check out the area, make sure you've got your chemicals in the right containers and certain things like that. I mean, I would absolutely be open to that. I don't know if that...
You might be, have to be open to that.
I mean, well, of course, yeah.
No, we're open to whatever we need to do to get her, she is a licensed nail tech.
Two years now.
What she needs to do on the licensing end, I think is done. But on the permit...
Supposing this doesn't work out, does that mean that you can rent out your space to anybody that wants to have a business?
So monetarily, if it doesn't work out, I would probably just go back to working in a salon for someone else. But if it does work out and I do make a good, a decent amount of money where I can afford to get the space, I would love to explore that and legally purchase my own studio kind of area. Again, I would probably only still keep it just myself, I just, I think I would prefer that.
Why don't you go to some of those, you know, the like older 55s, like there's an elderly building in the city and get permission to put your name on a billboard, on a, you know, on the board in the room and say, "I'll be here Tuesdays and Wednesdays," and have people sign up to get their nails done. You can just go there yourself and sit and do everybody's nails.
I just have so many...
Things to carry?
Yes, I've got like my drill and a few other things, like a lot of glitter and decoration type things. I think it would be a bit tedious trying to carry it. I did that for a while when I was in school. Of course, I was bringing all my things and playing with the girls' nails and it just really got heavy overall. I've got like, sort of like a makeup travel case, like on the roller, it's just really heavy trying to bring everything. And I think if I would do something like that, I'd probably end up just renting a chair at a salon where I pay my certain amount, I make 100% of my profit and I pay out my salon. I don't think I would...
I just have a problem opening Pandora's Box. That just means anybody on Eastern Avenue with a garage can come here and have a business.
Well, we were looking at it as temporary, hopefully a stepping stone for her to move into.
That's what I asked you.
Safety.
I totally, I understand the question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. More, more safety for them.
I got a time limit of a year.
Yeah.
Hopefully less.
Sure, exactly.
You know, within that, you should be ready to move to bigger quarters.
Exactly.
That's the goal.
Temporarily permit one year.
Again, we're not against that, I just...
I think a year is more than enough time to explore and...
Sabrina doesn't wanna have other workers. She doesn't wanna start a business with more than just herself.
Right. I would be in more of the home salon category, I suppose, that kind of feel to it?
If we see that it works, then she'll be able to, on her own, go into a place that she'll be able to purchase or establish and rent the building, which will have everything that she needs for a salon.
I think that's...
What are you doing day-to-day right now? How are you facilitating your customers right now?
I'm sorry?
How are you facilitating your customers?
I work at my salon.
So you're, you are, you're at a salon right now? I, I'm not really sure right now, but where I think I'm gonna start pushing this towards and we are gonna go through the rest of the case still, but I'd almost like to push this on a continuance level more so that I can talk with the, with the, you know, with the, you know, ISD and the city solicitor to see what kinda constraints I can put on, we, as a board, can put on you for number one, for time, for, you know, just, just overall different things. I don't know where our jurisdiction starts and stops as much as I think I would, I'd want to, to comfortably move forward with this, but I just, I also don't wanna, you know, hurt you as well 'cause that's, minimum it's a month. So I just, let's go through the rest of this, let's, let's hear, is anybody else here in favor? And I know, you know, one of the city councils is here with you guys and stuff, so it's, I'd like to hear what he has to say and let's see where this goes and then let's kinda, you know, keep this moving. I kinda wanna hear the rest of the case and then probably, I think that's the way I'm gonna start to push. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I just, I have a lot of questions that I'd like to ask that I know I don't have the depth to answer, so why don't we start there? Is there any other questions of the board?
No.
Right now? No? Thank you. Anybody else here in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Thank you, my name is Rick Stavrid, 221 Morona Street, Lynn, 12 city councilor where this location is located. St. Pierre's reached out to me, explained what they were trying to do. Suggested that they come before you to see if it would be allowable. As Mr. St. Pierre had stated, there is a chiropractic business directly across the street due to its down childcare facility, a little bit down to EG's, Richardson's, and CBS. So, there are businesses located there. They did explain to me that it would be for one person, that it would be Sabrina by herself, just painting nails. It wouldn't, it would be by appointment only, it wouldn't be walk-ins, signs, cows all over the place, or employees. Mr. Callen, I think the idea of setting a time provision to it's probably a good idea. And that way, we don't, to your point, Ms. Curley, open a Pandora's Box by permanently allowing everybody to open up a business in the garage in Eastern Ave. So with those provisions in place, I'd be in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else in favor of this petition? Seeing that there are none, I'm gonna close the hearing for those in favor. Is there anybody here in opposition to this petition? Anybody here in opposition? Seeing that there are none in opposition, what is the wish of the board?
I move that we continue to make sure every meeting, there's enough time, Mr. Chairman.
What's the next meeting?
October 1st.
October 1st.
So that's really only leaving like two weeks, right?
Yeah.
I would second that motion to continue and what I'd like to do in that timeframe is I'd like to talk to a few people and what I'm gonna ask them, if it's, if you can kinda agree with some of the stipulations we, I'd like to put on it. I don't know if there's other members going like with what the city council said, something like six months, something like no more than, you know, two clients at a time, you know, some, nobody but you working there type stipulations. If those, those kinda things are okay with you, just to kinda keep a, you know, a normal size to this thing so that it can't blow up in our face or out of control like, like things like this can. You know, I know everybody starts off with the best intentions, but if we give you a blanket permit to have a business there, if you don't continue yours, anything can go there, so... Does that sound, sound feasible to the board? So, I believe with those, with those stipulations, we'll continue it for the, for the couple of weeks and then I'll have the answers that I would need to make me comfortable to, to vote on it in a couple of weeks. So, call the roll.
To continue to October 1st, Mr. McQuarrie?
Yes, continue.
Mrs. Crowitz?
I have to continue.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to continue.
And Mr. Gesono?
Yes, to continue. So we'll see you guys in a couple of weeks and I'll, I'll definitely have, we'll definitely have it, you know. I mean, I definitely don't see, I don't have any problem with it, I can't speak for anybody else, but as long as the, you know, the city's not gonna have a problem with me not having a problem with it, you know? So, we'll see you guys in a couple of weeks. So the next case this evening is case number 9903, 259-261 Chestnut Street. Petition of Thomas McGovern by his attorney Sam Vitale to permit the alteration to an existing non-conforming three-family building to allow the use of a two-family dwelling on a lot in an awful apartment house district with less than the required parking in conformance with parking number and design standards.
Yep.
Before we actually even let you guys get going, I'm gonna read what the law department sent down to me. Dear Chairman Gesono, 259 and 261 Chestnut Street, dear chairman, it has come to the attention of this office that the above-mentioned property is on your agenda this evening for certain proposed relief. If the Honorable Board decides to grant the request of relief, such relief should be conditioned upon the satisfactory resolution of the pending legal matter, CV number 1913 CR 001179, in the Lynn District Court, the payment of the outstanding tickets in the amount of $27,640 and the payment of all outstanding real estate taxes, including tax title amounts, attorney fees cost, and other expenses. Yours truly, George Michaelopoulos, city solicitor. So...
I don't represent the owner of the building. I represent Mr. McGovern, who's the owner under agreement. By reading that document, I would say that that's a criminal proceeding, it's not a civil proceeding. And with respect to outstanding taxes, if the property's gonna be conveyed by the owner and give Mr. McGovern the title, who has to pay taxes, the water liens, whatever liens there are on record. As far as the Board of Appeals being a collection agency, an pending criminal case, in which a judge apparently hasn't made a decision, let alone determined the amount. I mean, I go to you again, your question about whether...
I read that, Sam, only for the simple purposes, my interpretation of this letter and correct me if you feel that my interpretation is wrong. Whatever transpires from this case, approved, denied, continued, whatever, I at a minimum are gonna put the stipulation that this letter requests that these things be taken care of before the approval moves forward. Whether, I know they're not yours to take care of, but I'm just saying, the petition will not go through if these things are not taken care of. And that's a stipulation that the law department's asking me to put on this and I'm just letting you know that I'm, at a minimum, I'm gonna put that stipulation on. Not that I'm not gonna vote for it or against it, I'm gonna vote how I see the case, but...
The problem, I have a problem, you put, I don't have a problem with the board putting stipulations on. And I don't have a problem with the board putting stipulations on that they can enforce. This is a zoning board of appeals and there are people who owe taxes. There's an existing city ordinance, right now, that says, "If you go on to get a liquor license, you wanna get this license, you have to pay your taxes." So that's already an ordinance, okay? I represent the water and sewer commission. You can't convey property in the city of Lynn without satisfying the water and sewer commission 'cause there's a lien against your property. But I don't know, I can, and I think I did check, there's no demolition order that I'm aware of that says, "Take down this building." Sometimes when the city thinks a building is a nuisance, they have to go through a process in which they bring in people, and I think they did in this case. Because I know that, one of the reasons I know the building is structurally sound is they had a board of survey and Jim Starrett was on the board of survey and I think they had a, they hired a structural engineer. So I think they determined that the building, the fire was on the third floor a couple of years prior and then the damage was the water coming down. But they then, I think they determined that the building didn't have to be, you know, sometimes there's a fire, they say, "You gotta take it down tomorrow because it'll fall on people going by." They didn't do that. And they, as far as I know, the city council didn't vote to demolish the building because it was a public nuisance. Now, there could be, the matter of fines, I don't know whether the fines are for trash, rodents, whether they relate to the fire, I don't know anything about that because Mr. McGovern saw an opportunity to take a building that was an ISO that was empty and apparently owes taxes and to purchase it and renovate it and put it on tax rolls and make it housing available in a neighborhood in a city that needs housing and... it, uh, housing available in a neighborhood in a city that needs housing, and to make the building safe, and to do those things. He couldn't buy the, and I don't represent him in the, in the transaction to acquire the property, okay? I'm just here to get him approval, that a building was once a three-family that had a fire, and as I understand it, the owner of the property, uh, apparently didn't do what the ISD, if somebody wanted him to do, and from what I understand from Mr. McGovern, the owner of the property's story about why he was distracted, whatever his wife was, but he didn't do what he was supposed to do.
Right.
That's his obligation, he has to fulfill it, and, and I can understand that the city, uh, has that expectation, but whether, that they can use you to collect, um, an undetermined fine, if it's in the courts, if somebody said there was a judgment, for example, then somebody's made a decision, and that's what's owed, I, I have no idea what's owed, whether it's that, that sum, or a different sum, or a lesser sum, I have no idea. I'm not the attorney in that case in the criminal court, um, I appreciate you reading the letter, we, we came to address the zoning issue that's required because, uh, the building once was a three-family, Mr. McGovern's proposal is to essentially saw off the top, and, uh, because the rest of the building, it may have to be dented and repaired, but it's structurally sound, and to use it as a two-family, that, I mean, that's essentially his proposal, and why we're before you is that the building is on an undersized lot, doesn't meet any of the current, uh, dimensional requirements, 'cause it's been that way since the 1900s, the lot's been that size, the frontage, it's on a corner lot, on Collins and Chestnut, and, uh, so Mr. McGovern saw an opportunity to restore the building, uh, obviously the city's gonna recoup fees when he pays to get the building permit, when he has the taxes, and there are people living in the building, um, I'm certain the people in the neighborhood would rather see it be viable than, uh, abandoned, left away, or in disrepair. We also saw an approach, the city recently, not recently, but a few years ago, sold a lot on Collins Street that you may have seen, that's used for parking, that lot was sold by the city, we inquired of those people, right now they have no interest in letting anybody from this building park there, but there were two rights of it, one off Collins, one off Chestnut, they sort of came to a point like this, and in fact, you could've, if you had to, if you drove the right of ways, you could actually drive off Collins and out onto Chestnut, or in off Chestnut and out onto Collins, but those right of ways really have been extinguished by practice in that the purpose of a right of way is allow somebody to get access to a lot that they otherwise couldn't get to. Those lots don't need the right of way, and if you've been by, as I have, and I told Tom, and that's why I worded the request for relief about the parking, the people are parking, the people I think next door are parking in one right of way that's on, um, off the Chestnut Street side, I actually parked on the right of way that's off of the Collins Street side, about nine to 10 feet wide, uh, and they're long enough, 'cause I pulled in off Collins and backed out onto Collins, so that, uh, from our perspective, the three-family never had a parking, and because it was used as a three-family, and it's been that way since the 1900s, it could continue to exist with no parking, because the parking ordinance that was put in effect in 1964, up until then, there was no required parking for any use anywhere in the city. In 1964, they said, "If you keep doing what you're doing, and you don't have parking, you can keep doing what you're doing, but if you change what you're doing, and you do something differently, then you gotta meet the current parking requirement." There's no way that this lot can satisfy the current parking requirement, but I do think it could get close, because for a two-family, you need three spaces, and when I, why I said not in conformance with the design standard, I meant the five-foot buffer, all right, and I meant, the width is really, one is nine feet wide, the other one I think is like 10 feet wide. So, we think that A, we can make what once was a, a three-family building with X amount of rooms be a, a two-family with fewer numbers of rooms, and we think we can find a way to park at least two and maybe three cars where before, nobody was parking, uh, and restore the building, uh, and, as I say, add it back to the tax rolls, and provide housing for people in Lynn. So from that perspective, what Mr. McGovern proposes, I think is a proposal worthy of your consideration, one I would hope that you would look favorably upon. Tom's been before the board many a time, and I think has built many a home brand-new, uh, and is one of those that's added to the community by putting residences out there that have attracted people to come to our city, or enable people who live in our city to stay in our city, and so, I think this is just a continuation of his record with respect to dealing with, uh, properties, this one may be distressed, the, the prior owner may have run afoul of other city agencies for reasons I don't know, but from reading that document, it tells me that's a criminal matter. That's what the CIO's...
Apparently, I know, we listened to a lot, there's a couple of things that bother me, I'd like to ask some questions, especially, right? Uh, I know you've done a good job, and you're a good developer, and I'd like to see you get permission from this board to do this work, but what bothers me is, is, is the money that's owed to the city, and I wouldn't wanna be in favor of passing, even though, I mean, we'd have to continue with it, check with the, uh, with the solicitor's office of what, of what we should do in a case like that, 'cause this doesn't come in usually in front of us, something like this, this, this is rare that we get a letter from a city solicitor that there's that much money owed to the city.
I think that concern is that it's not part of...
Is there any way you can get an agreement with the, uh, with the owner about these bills, so, so you could have a better position too?
Well, I think the answer would be based on the selling price.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That these amounts would have to be paid, and sort of...
So if you get an agreement from the owner, and, and this and that, and if this is continuing, which I hope it is, so that we can feel better about, uh, you know, we like to, me as one, I know, and the others would like to see you get, keep up the good work and help out the city, uh, as far as I'm concerned, that's what I'd like to see, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have two questions.
Some kind of an agreement, that's approved by the city solicitor, that we can proceed with this.
Okay. Um...
Are you buying the property?
Yes, yes.
So are you, so, let me just, let me just head a couple of questions, Sam, so, Tom, you're gonna buy the property, you're gonna take, make it a, from a three-family into a two-family?
Right.
How many bedrooms are on each floor, do you know?
Three.
Three bedrooms, so there's gonna be two apartments with three bedrooms each, so you're essentially turning a three-family into a two-family?
Yes.
You're taking a burned-down, dilapidated building, looking to make it a viable building for the city.
Yes.
I know, I know your track record, I know your history, you do a lot of good things in the city, I, you know, I think this is gonna be another one of them. I would hate to make you wait to vote on this, I would love to vote on this, and just put the stipulation out that, whatever the outcome of this is, whether it's just even the city going, "We don't care about it, but, we're happy whatever you're gonna do," whatever that is, I'm sure you're gonna take care of it like you do anything else you would, maybe you're not even buying it.
You might not even buy it.
That's what I mean, so, I have no worry that this is gonna get taken care of, so would you rather continue, figure out whether this needs to go away, or would you rather have us vote and say, "You'll take, you'll assure that this is taken care of," yeah?
Well, don't, well, I gotta speak like a lawyer for a second.
I'm asking you.
But, Tom, my only concern is that there was a, a specific number that I have no information about, so what if the, I'll give you the, what if the number's greater than we make out, or the owner makes it?
This is the first time you've seen this letter?
Yeah, I haven't seen this letter.
Okay.
Was it addressed to me?
No, it's addressed to me, actually.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I think only the state's, I was gonna get the final number on what's owed to the city.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that there could be that number or a different...
Absolutely, and when the, when the city's supposed to contact me to give me this letter, he just basically wants somebody to pay attention to this, he doesn't want us to give an okay for you to go ahead and turn this into a two-family, and that that's gonna go away, 'cause that's not going away, I think that's more of a heads-up, this is not going away, guys, so no matter what you get granted here this evening, that this isn't going away, so I think that's all that, the way that was conveyed to me is that's all that is, so it has nothing to do with whether you're gonna do what you're gonna do, whether you're not, that's up to you, but that's not going away, is all that letter's saying to me, so to attach that letter to a yes or a no, that's, that's, I mean...
So, Mr. Chairman, I feel like we should know the final number on that from the city solicitor, and so everyone's on the same page about, about...
See, it says it's a pending legal matter.
Right.
If you knew the number, at least I'll come back, and it'll be exactly the same thing.
Yeah, see, I, I don't personally, I, I agree with you, Mr. Callen, but I don't personally, and for lack of a better term, care what the number is, to be honest, I don't care what the problem is, I just wanted to get taken care of, so...
So, so, but I'm just saying that maybe the better way is to condition it on a stipulation that whatever's determined, I mean, this is a pending legal matter, that there's outstanding fines of that.
I'm not looking for the, I'm not gonna put a stipulation that this fine needs to be cleared, I'm gonna put a stipulation that this matter needs to be cleared up before any approval goes in play.
Yeah.
However it's cleared, that's what I mean, well, that's what I'm saying, so I don't wanna hold Mr. McGovern up either for a couple of weeks, I don't care what this letter's about, I just wanna make sure it gets taken care of like the city solicitor does, so I'm more than willing to go ahead with a vote on this petition with a, with a stipulation that this needs to be cleared up before whatever vote is, becomes, becomes valid.
I, I recognize the board has powers, that they can add conditions and stipulations, I just didn't wanna burden Mr. McGovern with ability, it's not responsible.
So, with, with that being said, is it, is there any questions from the board for, for Mr. McGovern, pending on the proposal that they have in front of us for the case? No?
So, the building's gonna be chopped down to two stories?
Take the third floor off, which is basically burning.
That's what it's on, the third floor.
You want to say it? You go.
So, are you planning on addressing the property?
No, I just didn't know the other question.
Every time I, I drive by that house, I say, "This is such a beautiful building in one time, I could never understand why it's been damaged."
I believe, I believe, yeah, I don't, uh, clearly, you get the one on, because the one on, it's a joint, and I don't know, okay? And nobody uses that, like, I actually, I use it, I drove in it, okay, to see whether we could get a car in, so that's one, all right? Then on the Chestnut Street side, there's another right of way, which I've seen it have found, okay, which I haven't determined whose vehicles they are, but if it's a right of way, he's got as much right to use it as whoever else is, so I'm thinking, there's another one at least, okay? So, I, I can see at least two, perhaps three, depending on what happens with the butter on the property on the right-hand side on Chestnut, because the rights of way, I showed Tom on the plane, they sort of lead to one another, and there's a little bump out, which I think whoever created it, in your plan that I may have submitted, it looked to me so you can make a turn, in other words, it's parallel to here, and then the one that comes in off, um, there's a little bump out, right where the front of the other one is, so I, I think that's what they intended.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd definitely like to see some layout, some plan, full plan for this property.
Okay. Any other questions of the board? Seeing that there are none, I'll open the floor up for anybody else in favor of this petition.
Thank you once again, my name is Rick Stavert, 221 Verona Street, Lynn, 1-2 City Councilor, but this property is located, um, I'm also the chairman of the Public Properties Committee, as far as like, setting a, a drop dead number, what it'd be owed in back taxes and all, there's always a daily per diem rate that, you know, keeps going up, so that number's gonna change, um, so, but I mean, before it closes, that's like money in the big bank to the city of Lynn, so, um, as the counselor, this, this property's been a, going to my side, uh, since I came on, calls from the residents, um, my calls to ISD, asking them to go out and find the property, uh, it's obvious the, the owner has done nothing but neglected, he's done nothing to the property, and he hasn't paid his bill to you. So, when I got the call from Mr. McGovern, um, knowing his track record, I was, I was thrilled to hear that he was interested in rehabbing this property, um, I expressed my concerns, uh, mainly because of parking and the school system being so crowded, um, that I was hesitant to be in favor of a three-three, and, uh, we talked a little bit back and forth, and, uh, came to the decision that he would lop off the third floor and, uh, and make it a two-family, so, um, knowing the work that Mr. McGovern's done, he just built a single family on an old vacant lot right down the street on Collins Street, did a great job, he does great work in the city, and, um, and I would love to see him buy his property and rehab it, I think it'd be great for the neighborhood, so I'm definitely in favor.
Are you also in favor of saying three-three, or as a two-family?
Two, two.
Two, two.
Not, not a three-family with three bedrooms.
Okay. So not regular two-bedroom?
Right, right, just to, to cut that down, you know, the English school, English now, you know, 2,000 kids, um, you know, I took, I try to keep the three-bedrooms even at a limit, but, but what was a three-family, three-bedroom, I think, uh, having a two-family, three-bedroom is a good compromise there.
I definitely want to see a full plan, make sure...
So, I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else in favor? Seeing that there are none, I'm gonna close it for those in favor. Is there anybody here in opposition? Anybody here in opposition to this petition? Seeing that there are none, I'm gonna close it, opposition, what is the wish of the board?
I want you to grant the petition with the stipulations Mr. Chairman, that you talked about.
I'll second that. Um...
Can't you be going with full plan, Mr.?
I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna, you have an issue with the grant to forward us a picture of a floor plan? If we granted this petition, would you send, you mind sending it? 'Cause I know, obviously, why they're, they're not in front of us now, but I know your, your track record, so I'm comfortable, you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
They'll send, and we'll vote, and give him some peace of mind to go into the drawings, yeah? Okay. Good, Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Call the roll.
Mr. McElwatt, to grant?
Yes.
With stipulations?
Correct.
Mr. Wooton, to grant with stipulations?
Yes.
Mrs. Curley, to grant with stipulations?
Yes.
Mr. Callen, to grant with stipulations?
Yes, to grant with stipulation.
And Mr. Gesano, to grant with stipulations?
Yes, to grant. Petition granted. The next case this evening is case number, it's actually a continued case, case number 9887, 110 Mary Emma Street, petition of Joseph Scola by his attorney, John Miles, to permit the alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming three-family structure previously granted a variance in 1939 by allowing the modification of the exterior of the building in the I-1 district.
John Miles, two meetings ago, he had a number of questions in rows, one was cleaning up the yard, and done, two was the beginning of the side of the building, he was to provide architectural plans, plans for the, uh, closed, uh, modifications, and then a plot plan, yeah, provided all the information, these questions, uh, as you know, this was a, a version that was granted in 1939, the only reason before you was that, builder's spec stated that the modification is done in the building, endurance was granted for 39 until you approve the modification, and you'll have to answer any questions right now.
Do you have anything for us, Mr. Miles? Do I already have it? I already have it.
Yeah.
So, the parking is four stacked parking spaces? The parking, you have four stacked parking spaces, and then two on the side?
That's all it is.
In other words, if number four wants to get out, number three, two, and one have to move their cars, that's what I'm asking.
That, according to the plans submitted, the bottom line is that this was already, insurance was already granted to this property, not before you wrote the issue of whether it's adequate parking, it was already decided by the board back in 1939.
I know, but this is, this is, this is 2019.
Not change the use of the building, the building has been utilized as a three-family drawing for all those years, no question with the use, I think we had a number of questions... I think we had a number of questions over there, so we'll respond to them. On the third floor, adding dormers, that's the extent of the request before you... I invited someone else, Chairman.
I'm welcome, huh?
This is a letter from the dorms, I think it's part of the record already.
Yeah. I didn't even get to that key folder yet, so I'll get there.
Mr. Miles, where was the second means of egress from that?
As it presently exists, Mr. Callen.
Is it inside the building?
It's inside the building, I believe, I guess.
There's no exterior stairwell?
No.
No.
And then the only modification to the building as it exists presently is the addition of the dorms on the third floor, so that an individual could stand up nearby.
Oh, right, right, yeah, yeah, indeed, of course.
What is she taking, my... Oh, no, no, that's all right, no, 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 I was looking for something else, you can look at that.
You know, in addition to work, it's already been done in the building. The wall in the back is going to be repot, is part of the modification to the dwelling. And at some point in time, somebody had mentioned the necessity to obtain the four-year yacht to allow additional parking. That's a stipulation we wanted to provide by us.
So what, Mr. Miles, what is this letter telling me? This letter's telling me that you guys need to come see us to be able to build the dorms, right?
The dorms are much in issue. Other than that...
Other than that...
Three-family, right, long...
Yeah, but as you know, Mr. Miles, once you, once you hit the table, you're gonna, you're gonna open yourself up to the parking and anything else that comes along with it.
There's no question, that's what we're here to respond to.
Any questions from the board?
I have a quick question. So, I was just looking back at the notes from our last meeting and what the stipulations were. So we've got the interior and exterior layout of the property.
Right.
And we have a new site plan. But I know by the way, what's happening, okay? New parking plan. Did you get a parking plan? A parking plan?
We submitted with a floor plan.
Oh, 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 okay. And then, that's what she was saying.
That's just what we discussed, in case you wanted to see it.
So, as far as everything that we asked to get done, we've done.
There's just a pair of things that hasn't been done yet.
We haven't done that yet, we don't know what the...
Everybody's gonna be talking.
Well, that was, that was the place last night.
That's stipulation, one of the issues, and...
Tell me again, just to refresh my memory, why we want, why we want to do this, if it's already a three-family, what's the, what's the net gain?
The net gain.
What's the net gain? What's the, what's the logic if it's already a three-family, doing an addition?
The improvement to the house...
Are you living in the house now?
No, I don't. Okay, so, he owns the building, I own it.
Okay.
But he's gonna invest a lot of money in this to bring it up to aesthetically, to have better state than it has been. And as I said, the area in the backyard may help, but we're one of that. We're gonna address the wall aesthetic, so we think it'll take the building much more, better set up in the neighborhood.
But it'll be bigger third floor and you can get more money to rent it?
No, no, we're not doing anything except in the kitchen, the roof is slanted, okay? So, when you cook, it's just this one area, that's it. We're not doing anything else, we're not adding bedrooms or anything, we're just putting the door in the kitchen so people can stand up with a hot bedroom, but that's all.
Is it rented now?
No.
Has it been rented?
Has been rented till about six months ago. There was a leak in the roof, and that's what initiated the whole, water came in and a lot of damage was done to the first floor apartment about six months ago. It's been passed with the refurbishment of the department, fixed that up, make a reason.
I remember when you came before the board already for this, and it was continued.
Right, right, his reasons. So we did everything that you asked him.
So it's just a money amount that you wanna do there?
Any other questions of the board? Okay?
No.
No? Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Excuse me, seeing that they're none, I'm gonna close the hearing for those in favor. Anybody here in opposition? Anybody here in opposition to this petition? Seeing that they're none, I'm gonna close the meeting for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
Can we add this as a stipulation to this?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. So a motion made, motion seconded with the stipulation to repave the whole driveway, right?
Correct.
Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes.
Yes, to grant with stipulation to pave the driveway?
Yes.
Mr. McQuarrie?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to repave the driveway would be very good.
Mr. Callen, Callen with the stipulation to pave the driveway?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Gisano?
Yes, to grant. Petition's granted with the stipulation. The next case this evening will be case number 9906, Lot 13, adjacent to Lot 81 Addison Ave, House number 97-404-007. Petitioner Thomas Meacham by his attorney Alexander Capano, to allow the construction of a single-family home on a non-conforming lot in the single-family district I-1 with less than the required area and frontage, and not conforming with section nine off-street parking.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm representing Thomas Meacham on this. He would like to secure the enforcement, relief from the strict enforcement of the zoning code that Chairman Gisano just alluded to. I do have plot plans submitted, and what I'm bringing with me new today is a petition signed by neighbors, and I'd like to enter it on the record in support. And other than that, I would like to point out that the requested relief for minimum lots bare footage, it does adhere with the lot sizes in the rest of the neighborhood, so it wouldn't be different from the other houses in the neighborhood. And beyond that, I'd just like to answer any questions that anybody has.
Well, what's this, I can read over here that it's 40 inches wide, I mean, 40 feet wide?
That's right.
But what's the other, I can't make up the other number.
Which, the 42 on the bottom, or which 40 are we looking at?
This one here.
That's the size of the proposed building, so it would be...
24.
So what?
24 by 40.
That's the footprint of the building.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any sort of testing here, to see if there's a ledge?
Uh, there is in the back, but to my, to my knowledge, Mr. Meacham, just walked in, we're not disturbing any of the ledge back there unless it, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't think we're disturbing any of the ledge back there.
Yeah.
There is in the back there, but...
So, so the setback on the house from the, from the property line is what?
That way is, so, yeah, 42.
So the front of the house is, oh, it's, so, let me... It's 13, 13.3, is it?
Is there a five there, 15.5? Are you talking about from the, the corner of the house to the Addison Street? Yeah, 15.5.
15.5.
Yes, sir.
See, the only opposition, I mean, for me, that's good for me, that's right, that short driveway in front of these, or the garage under, that's a garage under, right?
That is, it's a one-car garage there, and then there's one in that with a two.
Yeah, well, that's 15,000 feet, that's a recipe for someone to park there, that kind of a guy hanging out past the property line. I know you've got 10 feet on the left side.
Yeah, we do have a little bit of space, that 97 side goes a little further back, so there's some space on the side of the...
All I'm asking you is this, because you have another violation, that of that second property space, you're supposed to stay five feet back from the property line, which would leave you enough for the parking space there. Is there any way you can push this building back a little?
Back to the left, should back to the left.
Space on the side.
Yeah, the space is on the side of the house there.
Space on the side. But it's not adequate, there's a zoning violation.
So, I requested a view of parking confirmation, so maybe I should have, you know, edited my request on the third point there to be a side yard variance for, per parking space.
Yeah, you request that to be added to the petition.
I request that the side yard variance be added to the petition, and in that case, I appreciate that.
So, if you, what I'm saying, if, if it's clear enough, and you have no ledge...
Right.
You could push this building back another five feet.
I'm not sure, I can't speak for that.
Well, there's the owner.
There is a little ledge there, if we push it back a little more, we're trying not to disturb too much of that.
Well, I understand that, so that's why I'm asking these questions. So when you start digging, if it was put as a stipulation, you could move it back enough to get parking in front of the, that garage.
Yeah, we can make that a condition, that's all.
Know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have a layout of what the inside of this is gonna look like?
A floor plan of the house?
Yeah.
I do have some, I do have some of the floor plans, but I'd like to get with Tom before I submit anything to make sure that they're the final ones.
Well, what are you gonna have, a one bedroom?
Are those the ones, the ones that you gave me? Yeah. Okay, then I can submit these.
Can I see this?
I apologize for that, I was just making sure. But these are the ones that they wanted me to do.
Is this gonna be one, one-story?
It's gonna be a split level.
And I would, I would kinda, I mean, the inside layout's the inside layout, I, doesn't matter, you got, you got any elevations, even the front view of the building, nothing?
No, none, and it's gonna be, you know...
Just regular, just regular, small, farm-style?
Yeah, it's 960, we're only using less, you know, we're using 17% of the lot area there, it's 970 square feet, it's a very small footprint on the front of the lot, away from the ledge, you know, and it is a split level, it's gonna be a really nice-looking house that I think will make the neighborhood look a lot better than just a brush, trash-filled sort of...
I know, but it could be cleaned up and look nice, it doesn't have to be druff.
How many bedrooms?
That's what I wanna know. There's something that's...
Three bedrooms.
I'm trying to figure out what's going on in there.
How many bedrooms, Mr. Capano? Three?
Very good.
What type of landscaping are you gonna put on there?
What is it? Three bedrooms?
Um...
It's not bad.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, it is a, it's a nice water area, but there will be consistent here.
So you don't sound...
Make sure...
What kind of landscaping?
Three bedrooms downstairs?
Um, shrubs, trees. Yeah, shrubs and shrubs. The back, we have the idea of instead of putting the deck, maybe the neighborhood down, you know, like an English garden, working with the ledge and stuff, something kind of a little nice back there, that's what we have in our...
Yeah, so you include that, that's a lot of trucks, yeah, it's a good pass.
Please, it's a long one.
Why don't you keep your arm around that?
Sure.
Do that?
Yeah. That's a real problem.
Well, there's gonna be nothing left for landscaping, but you're gonna have anything there at all, a little grass or something?
Yeah, I'm sure, you know, we'll make, we'll make it something that adds to it, make sure that's really nice.
That's semantic, yeah.
My councilor's got a little...
No, 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 yeah, no, it's, it's ground level, yeah. Is there any other questions of the board? Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing that there are none, I'm gonna close it for those in favor. Anybody here in opposition? Anybody here in opposition to this petition? Seeing that there are none, I'm gonna close it for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board? I'll give a motion to grant on this one.
Yes.
Motion made, seconded, please call the roll.
Son, I mean, Mr. Wooton, to grant?
To grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Was there stipulation on the elevation, exterior elevation?
No, nope, I'm comfortable with it, yeah.
Okay. No stipulation.
That's it, okay, Mr. Florrie?
Yes. Right.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Gisano?
Yes, to grant. Petition granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next case this evening is case number 9901, 113 119 Broad Street. Petitioner, Dabak, Zysik?
Mr. Zysik.
Zysik, President and Treasurer of KCMP Capital, trustee of 113 119 Broad Street Lynn, nominee trust by his attorney, Thomas Dabakis.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tom Dabakis, I'm attorney with offices at 56 Central Avenue in Lynn. And in the blue shirt is Mr. Zysik, the petitioner. And also standing up here is Jody Harrow, who's Mr. Zysik's property manager. Mister, the subject of the petition tonight is the new medical building on the corner of Broad and Silsby Streets, that a long time ago was used by Lynn Community Health, and then it became a medical office building. And Mr. Zysik, Mr. Zysik purchased the building. He grew up in Swanswick, and, or spent a good chunk of his youth in Swanswick, and always thought Lynn was a gem, and since 2013, he and his group have purchased 30 buildings in Lynn, and done a great job with all of them, and this is his latest venture. This is in the central business district, which means that as a matter of right, we could have mixed-use street level, which means retail on the first floor and apartments up above. It's a four-story story building, and we're gonna have apartments on the top three floors. The problem with retail on the whole first floor, the first floor, the building has a footprint of 3,000 square feet, and there's just a very weak demand for retail, and as everyone well knows, there's just a tremendous shortage of housing in this city, and in particular, handicapped housing. So what Mr. Zysik is proposing, and hopefully the board will approve tonight, is to put 1,800 square feet of retail on the first floor, but in the other 1,200 square feet, put two roughly 600 square feet each apartments, fully handicapped, accessible. So, the entire frontage of Broad Street would be retail, and the entire frontage along Silsby Street would be retail, but the handicapped apartments would be in the back of the building with a small parking lot. I don't know if you've been there, I'm sure a lot of members have, and there's a big fire escape over there, and that, and it's not really suitable for retail. And, and there's a crime, handicapped housing. I submitted a floor plan, and this is so, it's been tweaked in such a minor way as to not even be consequential, but I want you to have... it's been tweaked in such a minor way as to not even be consequential, but I want you to have, it's been slightly revised since I did the filing, and the difference is that
This is on the first floor?
Yes, this is on the first floor, yes. The difference is
He's the woman, I'm sorry, Mr. Mackel, passing on now.
Uh, the difference is that they made this apartment just a tiny bit bigger, and this apartment just a tiny bit smaller, but the total area of the two apartments combined hasn't changed, if you just held it up next to the plan that I filed, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference. This is in Council Calucci's ward, and I've spoken to Council Calucci, and he's very much in favor of this. The other side of Sillsby Street is the, uh, boundary, Sillsby Street's the boundary between Council Calucci's Ward Four and Council Chakutus' Ward Five. So I also spoke to Council Chakutus, since her ward begins right on the other side of Sillsby Street, and she's also very much in favor of this. So, uh, all these, uh, uh, the, uh, the, the two apartments on the first floor would be what are called, uh, Studio Plus. They're large studios, roughly six hundred square feet each, with a, uh, with a bedroom area, but not a separate bedroom. I know that, I know that green is the favorite color of the board. Over here, we have some before and after pictures, so before is down here and after is here, and unfortunately, as you can see from the plot plan that I submitted, the building, um, on the front and on the two sides goes right up to the lot line, so there's no room to really put any green, except, uh, my client's gotten very creative, he's gonna put these planters, he's gonna put these nice awnings and put these planters over here, and down the side, uh, the alley leading to the back, plant a few, you know, just, how, how wide is that, would you say?
Very much.
Does, does that alley belong to you guys, or belongs to the, uh?
Actually belongs to nobody.
Yeah, what kind of planters are they, are they precast?
Cause every green is, uh, what we asked.
There's nothing there now.
Yeah, there's not.
Yeah.
What kind of, what kind of planters are you planting, are they precast or?
So the planters will be decked in planters, we do wanna green it up a little bit, make it more attractive, more well-kept.
Right, yeah, it's gonna be attractive, we're doing that, yeah.
And then, as you can see, down the alley, so, uh...
Kids with their feeties are all, on the wall, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of feet here?
Well, I'm just saying, there, well, no, no, there's none right now, I'm just saying, you know, as knowing the neighbors.
Yeah. So by the way, you know, in terms of the handicapped usage, aside from the fact that there's a, there's a tremendous shortage of handicapped housing, it, it's right in a bus stop, uh, so it's, it's, uh, it's a great location for handicapped housing, too.
Do you own this lot in the back?
The lot in the back is part of the lot, yeah, it's a, uh...
Here's about, here's about, currently there's five or six, it'll probably reduce it a little bit, because just now it's bringing everything up to code for parking, but it is, we have, but then to Mr. John Goldberg's brother, who would also have parking in that other building, so it's just all hardtop back there.
No, I mean, there were cars parked there when I was there.
I'm sorry?
And there were cars that were parked there when I was there, so that, but that does belong to this building.
Yes, back here.
For some type of parking.
Yes, it's shared, I mean, we have the majority of that for parking, the other building right behind us has some, you know, back-to-back parking.
Mr. Mackel, did you say something about a dumpster?
Right, I did ask what, I'm saying, in relation to, um, a parking spot for someone with wheelchair, with the required van, so if the, that, they usually take up more, more space than typical parking space, just 'cause the list will usually have to retract, right? So maybe you'll be losing some space there as well, um, you know, you won't have more than, especially if you don't have enough now, because upstairs on y'all's two apartment, Michael, right?
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, it is what it is in terms of being a limited parking area, luckily for us, there's no, it's being in the central business district, there's no parking, there's no parking requirement.
Mr. Demakis, would these, would these be handicapped accessible?
That's what, yes, yep.
Yeah.
Fully handicapped.
Fully handicapped.
Yeah.
Would you preference to veterans?
I mean, we're glad to, we try to contact
If there's a way we can do that, we would, we tried to contact the Department of Veteran Services here in Lynn, we left a few messages.
Well, I'm already saying, if you could do it, I'd like to.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I'd love to.
Great idea.
Sorry, Crowe, do you already have a tenant, uh, from these streets, all space?
No, we've been, we've been working on the other building now for, well, we started almost a year ago, maybe, I think, the demolition started in last fall.
Right.
And there's not been any dramatic demand for it, it does seem that the current environment in Lynn, that there is an oversupply of retail space, lack of demand, um, yet there is an over-demand and lack of supply inequality, and it seems so, hence why we've thought about doing this.
It's large.
Yeah, it is large, and that was feedback we could get in from the drumming group, the people that were getting to market to try to get it, so we'd like to have somebody that would stay there, be a good tenant, um, enhance while we're coming, as we think that would again, serve the needs that we see, and, and suit the building and the location.
Well, why'd you keep the name?
I'm sorry?
Why'd you keep the name of the building?
Numerical?
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't keep it.
No.
It, it looks like it, but it's a loft, actually, a loft, but it's true, it uses the same method, the, the font, and, that's true, like
That says loft on the right.
Loft, because all the buildings, the apartments are all loft.
I thought it was the same, too, I just took it as it was.
We should change the color, it's a good color.
Is that the building where a million years ago, there used to be a lunchroom there?
There was also a school department there as well.
No, but, and, and I taught years ago, I mean, like, eighteen, early nineteen hundreds, I have a postcard.
And support groups for people with housing issues. And a number of people from properties by this owner have come to us with concerns about how their buildings and apartments are managed. So we have grave concerns.
I'm gonna cut you off. Do you have any of them here? Do you have any?
Yes, yes. I was, I'm a former tenant of 501 Washington Street.
Okay.
And I, the reason why I moved out was because the conditions were very inhumane. And my family got traumatized because of renting an apartment from this property. So I'm here to support the statement that we have for a legitimate opportunity.
What is your name?
Sunny Nett Sanchez.
Any of you other guys direct, directly affected by this?
If you mean directly affected by living in one of the buildings by this company?
Yes.
No, but we have heard testimony from numerous.
I'll tell you what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna let her speak. I'll take the written testimony that you have. I'll take it and I'll look at it.
Okay.
But I'm not gonna, if you got, anybody else, you are the three ladies. I'll take your names, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have you speak in opposition.
Well, if you think they're ready to speak.
No, absolutely.
I would show you.
I'm more than willing to have you speak.
How much they're tenants, so I don't think they should.
No, you're more than willing to speak.
Have a permit to house more people and traumatize them.
Okay, thank you very.
That's my whole point.
Thank you very much. We'll definitely take it under advisement.
Traumatized in what way?
Well, there's some photo there.
You would be traumatized if you walked into a building where you see trespassers sleeping in front of your apartment, using drugs, lifting condoms, having sex in front of your apartment, and you walking in with your child who is asking you, why is this happening if we're paying rent? That's, that's the whole point. I don't think any of us or our families deserve something like this.
Yeah, no, I get it. Absolutely. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you for hearing us.
Anybody else in opposition to this petition? Anybody else in opposition to this petition? Seeing that they're anonymous, I'm gonna close the hearing for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
Motion to grant a petition.
A second to that motion. Call the roll.
Mr. McAlwar?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Crowitz?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Kalman?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Gesono?
Yes, to grant. Petition is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next case is case number 9902218, Judge Roe. Petition to Kevin Ronan. An administrative appeal of an issuance of a building permit by Inspection Service Department on about June 26th for a single-family home in the Al-1 district.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is Kevin Gannon on behalf of Kevin Ronan. Mr. Ronan is the owner of 214 Judge Roe. Over here in opposition to a building permit appeal, the whole time it was granted to 218 Judge Roe. This is part of what has been the Stone Brook subdivision back in 2000. In March 14th, 2000, it was a memory of conditions issued by the planning board regarding this development, which expressly limited the number of lots to 49 lots. At that time, it was a series of performance by Hayes Engineering, which again showed a limit of 49 lots. Thereafter, on April 7th of 2000, a covenant prepared by the Board of Appeals that was signed by developers, that covenant incorporated the plans of Hayes Development, of Hayes Engineering, again with 49 lots. We'll get to a point about this later, but there's a typographical error within that covenant, which said 50 lots. But again, that covenant expressly incorporated the plans of Hayes Engineering limiting the development to 49 lots. Thereafter, the lots were sold out. And the area that we're gonna be dealing with is this area here. It's lots 28 and 27, as shown on, again, these are the original page plans for the subdivision recorded. In July of 2002, these buildings were destroyed by its trustee, Michael Miles, presented to the Board of Appeals, I'm sorry, the planning board. They, an A and R plan, an 81B plan, which divided 27 and 28, creating these additional lots, 28A, 29A, and lot 50. So at this point in time, Mr. Miles exceeded the maximum number of lots that was permitted in the subdivision. Shortly thereafter, in August of 2002, there was a further division of the property. Lot 27 was carved up to create this little parcel here, 27B. Lot 50 remained as it was. And an area taken from this remaining land that the trust at that time still owned, parcel one was carved up. And Mr. Miles, by deed December 31st, 2003, conveyed all of these, these three lots, 50, 27B, and parcel one to himself by deed individually. He had granted a mortgage on the property, which was foreclosed upon in 2006. And that was purchased by Ventures Trust, Mr. Bransfield. And Mr. Bransfield submitted to the planning board another A and R plan, which carved that subject parcel into two lots, 50A and 50B. So now we're going even further beyond what was permitted. And again, this was done all by A and R plans. There was no subdivision approval either sawed or granted. This is the Al-1 district. Therefore, the minimum residential requirements were 10,000 square feet per lot and 75 feet of linear frontage for each lot. As you'll see on the plan, and you can provide a copy as well, both 50A and 50B benefit from only 37.5 linear feet of frontage. The building permit that we hear opposing concerns lot 50A. The building permit does not provide us with any benefit as to why a building permit was granted for this property, although it clearly doesn't meet the minimum residential requirements. So first, the permit is improper because the subdivision was expressly limited to 49 lots. To the extent that there is a conflict between the covenant, which has a typographical error, and the plan, which clearly shows 49 lots, it's been the established law of the Commonwealth since 1838, that if there's a discrepancy between the recorded plan and written description of real property, the recorded plan has incorporated controls. Clearly, the plans show only 49 lots, and 49 lots is all that's permitted. Now, if we go forward and try to figure out on what basis the building permit was granted, where again, it's only 37.5 linear feet of frontage, we don't know. But looking at the zoning bylaw, there is an exception to the 75-foot frontage requirement, and his ordinance is 8.3, 9.2. And what that ordinance provides is that on a curved road, there can be an exception. The curvature of Judge Roe is not so severe that it creates any sort of difficulty to develop this property as required by the zoning bylaws. To the extent that there's an ambiguity, it was created only by the developers here.
But is that an opinion or is that a fact?
No, that's.
Okay. I'm just, I'm asking, you, you just actually said, I'm asking.
It's a minor curve. If this, if this is to be interpreted as a type of curve that can create a variance from the 75-foot linear frontage as a matter of right, then any developer in this town can put a minor wave within a subdivision road, and then as a matter of right, be able to port chop lots all throughout the property.
Maybe?
So, no, it would. So if this is, if this is allowable, again, you're setting up precedent that could be followed by any one of such properties as a matter of right, port chop lots or irregularly shaped lots. And I note that the ordinance is as when includes neither a bylaw permitting port chop lots or irregularly shaped lots. So if we look even more closely at the bylaw exception, and presume that this is the basis for its application, as the bylaw reads, "You can have an exception, but the distance shall be measured through a portion of the building nearest the way along the line which is perpendicular to the radius of the curve." This is a line perpendicular to the radius of the curve, and it doesn't even get into lot 50A. So even if you concede that the exception applies in this case, applying it by its own plain language, it cannot satisfy the property.
Except the lot where there's a house already built on it?
No, they've not pulled a permit.
No, they've been constructing a house on it.
Already?
Yep.
Oh, they've got a permit. They've got a permit. So let me, let me ask, I'm gonna ask a question, not to cut you short. So if I'm understanding this correctly, the building department issued a permit for this, for a house, single-family house on this lot?
Yes.
And you believe that it should have come to zoning before it was issued?
I don't think that there's any question, it's 37.5 linear feet of frontage.
Again, without going a long way, that, that's pretty much the short story to what you guys are saying, right? What, what is the, the opposition to the house being built on the lot? What, what is the, besides everything that you just said, what, what is the root of the evil of the house being built on the lot, I guess? You guys are not happy with the house being built on the lot, correct? Why?
So when we purchased the house, when we purchased our property here from Judge Roe, it backs up to a very nice solid area.
Yep.
And I did my research, and I knew that it would have to go before the planning board, before the zoning board. Because of that happening, trees got torn down. My backyard is now a house. So the house that we paid good money for to back up to the landwoods and have this beautiful view, without any discussion, now there's a house in my backyard.
What does Inspection Services say about this?
They haven't given us an answer as to why it was built, and we've asked.
Now, you know, there's a, there's a stick with a little red flag on it, right by, is that your property that's to the left of this?
Yes, you're facing it on the road, it's actually directly in front of me.
Mr. Ronan's property is.
Okay.
Should have placed it on there.
Now.
It's a Lancer Vegas State.
All right, a Lancer Vegas State, right?
It's got a red flag.
It's got a red flag on it.
It shows your wall going on their property.
Yep.
Is that true?
Your person's property.
That's when we bought the house, that's where the wall was, yes.
No, what I'm saying, facts are facts.
That's what it's for.
Right, I, I mean, at the, at the end of the day, I, I mean, I'll save a lot of time. I, I'm in no position, no matter how long we debate this evening, to overturn a building inspector's permit. So, I mean, I, I can, I can save everybody a lot of time. There's, there's not a way I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to do that. So I, I think you would have to, you have a better chance of, of going after the building department or actually speaking to the mayor than, than you would me, because if the building department tells you to come to me, you're coming to me because they won't acknowledge you. Your issue's with them, not with me, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, the way the statute right now is to the extent that the building department has done something wrong, you are the first line of defense. That's your job under the statute.
I'm, I'm aware, I, I've been here a while. I'm not, I'm just, I'm telling, I'm, I'm telling you that we, we could talk about this for three more hours, and I'm never gonna overturn a building permit. So, I, I mean, we, we could save a lot of time here and just, I'll, 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 I'll let you finish, but I would implore you to, you know, let's, let's come to a result, because, I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I understand everything you're saying. I, I, I have complete, you know, I bought my house in the neighborhood, I brought it in for a reason. And I'm a lifelong resident, I, I, I get all those things, I just think, I'm not gonna overturn the building department, no matter, no matter what. I think you definitely have a legitimate issue, a legitimate case, but it's just, I mean.
By refusing to do that, you are again setting a precedent where any developer can put a wave in the subdivision road and get port chop lots in them. And if you said no in the future, then you'd be on the territory of pre-justice.
Okay.
Every case is different.
That's right. There's gotta be a reason why they issued the permit. And I, at a minimum, even if you wanna sit around for another month while I ask them, and I'll get you an answer? I'll do that for you, so that I'm giving you something.
Yes, please.
I'll, I'll, I'll continue here for a month, and I'll go ask the building department why they gave you the permit. And just know, whatever answer they give, it's, it's, you know, there's gotta be a reason, right? I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll continue it for a month, and I'll ask I S D.
I don't think we should delay it, just hold on.
At the end of the day.
It's only fair that you do that.
Yeah.
I think so, because I think in the future, if we'll be able to get, I actually feel like they don't need a.
Right, and I have no problem asking them, they must have a reason. And if you can't get an answer, I'm happy to try for you as, as, you know, just as a fellow resident of the city. I mean, I, I don't think they should be able to overstep, step in the process. If they have, we'll, we'll, we'll get to the bottom of it, but I'm, I'm, I'm willing to do that from, from my standpoint, so, you know, I just, you know, you understand where I'm, where I'm coming from. It's, it's, you know, I'm between a rock and a hard place. There's a reason why they did it, I just don't have that information right now, so we'll get to the bottom of it for you.
I submitted.
There's a smooth, I got, we got plenty of stuff, I got the packet. Yeah, no, we got it, it's very, very well done, I'll give you that.
Do you want a second time, maybe?
Yep.
Yeah, same, same thing, second thought.
Is there anybody here for this case? Save, save a little bit of time. Is there anybody here for this case?
Seven days ago.
No? Okay. Is, is there anybody on the board who's opposed to continuing this, why I check with I S D?
No.
Let's, let's. I'll make a motion to continue to the next regalia meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made, motion seconded, continue to the next meeting. I'll check off with I S D. Actually, I gotta check. We'll see if we can't get you guys an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You ready to call?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. McAlwar?
Yes.
Mr. Wooton?
Yes.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes.
Mr. Kalman? And Mr. Gesono?
Yes, to continue. The next case this evening is case number nine, yeah, 98937 Jackson Terrace. Petition of Bethany Adams and Julie Kencer?
Kencer.
Kencer, Kencer, sorry. To permit the construction of an addition to an existing non-conforming single-family structure on a non-conforming lot in the Al-1 district with less than the required side yard setback in lot overrange excess of allowed. That's definitely a horrible word to use. Go ahead, ladies.
We're basically just asking permission in order to take an assistant porch, tearing it down, just putting an addition. It would be like more of a four-seater porch, we're just adding a small portion of the porch, but.
Absolutely not, go away.
We thought it was gonna be like a slum dunk, because obviously our neighbor kept it in, and that's where we got the idea from, but apparently the, you know, the building inspector sent us something cute last week.
You forgot to come here at the last meeting?
We actually did not get a notice, so I apologize to the board. We didn't get a letter indicating that we had to be here.
Would it be conditioned?
Yeah.
Be included?
Um, yes.
Yes.
You will add?
Right now or after?
It'll be cheap. It'll be cheap.
Are you okay? No, you're good? Okay. So basically, you wanna rip off the porch?
Yes.
And do what? Make it?
Basically, it will be the same, the, it will be the same distance from the side of the property as that porch currently is, only eight feet further into a.
Oh, okay, all right. So you wanna, I'll get it. So you just wanna make it a little bit bigger, the room? Let's see if I'm gonna make it just more kitchen, is it more?
It's gonna be just more space, we have six kids.
Okey-dokey then. All right, all right.
Six adopted kids.
God bless you. Just sticking with the same basic style of the house, just kinda, just kinda?
Yeah, it's pretty much.
Simple box, simple?
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions from the board?
No, I think.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Just one, no pauses in that space, right? Nothing like that, right?
Yeah, you're not making a bedroom, right?
No, it's not a bedroom.
Okay, that's why I kinda asked what it was for. Okay, anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing that they're anonymous, I'm gonna close it for those in favor. Anybody in opposition to this petition? Seeing that they're anonymous, I'm gonna close it for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
Make the motion to grant.
Sure.
Motion made, seconded, please call the roll.
Mr. Wooton?
Up to grant.
Mr. McAlwar?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Kalman?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Gesono?
Yes, to grant. Case number 9905, 330, 334 Chatham Street. Petitioner, I'm not even gonna give it a try, you guys can tell me what it is, by attorney Jose Lopez. To permit the addition of two residential units in existing non-conforming structure on a lot in the business district with less than the required parking plant spaces not in compliance with section 9.0.
Good evening, my name is Jose Lopez, I represent Mr. Tifari.
That's good.
On July 10th, 2017, my client, Tifari, purchased the building at 330, 334 Chatham Street. This property was built in 1950, it is mixed-use in the business district, pre-existing and non-conformal, because there is residential unit inside of this business district property. We learned that in 2006, this property suffered a fire on the third floor, and both units were rendered uninhabitable, and they've been in that condition ever since. The previous owners had gutted that property to the studs, and at one point, they were granted a permit to go ahead and re-devote that space to living space, but then abandoned that permit. And so my client now finds himself with this property and is really just seeking to re-devote that space back to residential. Unfortunately, because this fire occurred in 2006, my client isn't able to take shelter under the safe harbor provision, where he would have been granted a year to continue then non-conforming use, when he purchased the property that had already expired. This property, I included some photos there, pages two show the front of the photo. Page three shows the side and the parking lot that's connected to this property. Page four is the back of the home. We did, before we took any action, we sent in a request of information to find out what is the current permitted use of this third floor in these two units. And the city responded, saying what I just explained to you, that at some point, it was residential, there was a fire. Because they had been unused for a certain amount of time, we could no longer take cover under the safe harbor provision, and would have to go in front of the city council to seek a special permit to re-devote this space to living space. We met with the board counselor, Council of Silas, we shared with the counselor our plans. Additionally, there was gonna be two, two-bedroom units up there. He requested that my client reconsider, instead of two, two-bedroom units, just having two, one-bedroom units. And so he went back, my client changed the plans, and resubmitted that. And we had a hearing. Before the hearing, my client went and spoke to a butters, the list of the butters that he spoke to, you can find on page.
Mr. Lopez, Mr. Lopez, I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna stop you real quick here, only for the simple fact, on January 22nd, they gave you, they granted you permission to what upstairs there with approval of us for two units with one bedroom, correct? Looking at your drawings, you've got two units with one bedroom?
Yes.
I'm not even gonna vote tonight on something that has a home office with a closet in it, up on those floors. I'll tell you, I'll tell you right now.
That was at the suggestion of the ward counselor. He said that would be the best thing to do is remove, it won't be a bedroom, we couldn't use it as a bedroom.
No, in this room, it won't be a bedroom, but as soon as he rents the apartment, it will absolutely be a bedroom.
Plus you have a closet.
Plus you have a closet in it, which even just throws it over the top. So at this time, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do. I'll give you the opportunity to continue this, and go back and redo these drawings with one bedroom and lose that room, or we'll continue down the road of you explaining the case, and then we'll vote on it. I'll give you that option.
I'd actually make this request. If the board might consider voting to grant this with the stipulation that the closets be removed and not included, then I think my.
You can still, you can still.
Still have two bedrooms.
You can still have two bedrooms.
Right, I want, I want, I want the whole room to go away, I wanna see it opened up into a living space.
Okay.
Or, or something along, I'm not gonna pigeonhole you into doing what you've gotta do, something along those lines, because you and I both know what, what's gonna happen here. You might have the best intentions, he might, I do, but.
Best intentions, just so that they're on the table, the best intentions are that Mr., excuse me, Johannes Tifari will live in one, and his business partner, who's gonna be here today, Ricky Decanter, would also live in the, on the other unit. These are business partners who are trying to do what they can as young men to purchase property and develop wealth for themselves, this is their.
And I'll tell you what, I've been on the board over ten years, and in those ten years, you know how many people have come back with properties, of people that have stood right in front of me and said what you said, looking to do exactly what I said was gonna happen?
I wasn't thinking about.
You know, I'm just telling, I'm, I'm just telling you, you know how many times I've heard that same sentence, and I've heard somebody else standing in your shoes, talking about a property that you just told me the same thing, looking to do exactly what I said was gonna happen? How many times could you count on two hands? And I don't, I, I'm not doubting you, I don't tell you the orders, I'm just telling you historical facts.
Sure, and Mr. Chairman, I, I will submit to you that we completely understand that position. We understand that once you grant it, it'd be hard to reverse it later.
That's right.
And things might change, and so then what I would ask then maybe is include the stipulation and have it be broader, so that this space is opened up and is not clearly sealed off in a way that could become a bedroom. That way, at least, we've achieved that step, and then we can come back, resubmit, resubmit those plans.
Well, I think we never wanna see this to be a two, I mean, two-family, right? Two bedrooms, two bedrooms.
Well, it can't, the city council only gave them a rule to do one bedroom, so.
Whatever, what would he, were this, you know, the stipulation, it would never be a two-bedroom.
Right.
I, I think I might have misspoken, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're saying. What I was asking was the stipulation would be that we would change the design and open up the space.
Yeah.
So that it's not easily converted in the future to a bedroom.
So I'll, I'll tell you what, why not, two weeks from now is the next meeting. Take this package, go back, make those changes, and come on back. And I'll tell you what, I speak for myself, I don't have a problem with it, but I won't do what we're talking about here, so that, that's, I just tell you. I can't speak for anybody else either, but, I mean, I, I would have no problem stopping everything right now, making a motion to continue this, have you guys go back, make the adjustments, and the very simple adjustments, and come on back in two weeks. Come on back in two weeks, we'll have a, you know what I mean? We'll have a lot better conversation, and, and I'm just trying to save everybody a lot of time, that's.
Mr. Chairman, I absolutely appreciate it. I do wanna make sure I put it on the table, though, on the, of the ward counselor's concerns, just staying honest to him.
Yeah.
One of the other concerns was parking in general.
Yeah.
And so I did research on this property, and if you were to turn to page.
Seven?
Page seven, it's a 1991 planned layout where this lot was, was divided. The attorney on record there is the very famous attorney, Paty. But, but I, I put it that in the record here, because there, there were eight parking spaces at that time on the side, and it looked like there might have been two behind. I doubt it today if this board would approve those two parking spaces back there. But the property, as we're proposing, would require nine, and so we'd be one parking spot short of what's required for the entire property. So I just wanted to make sure that that was very clear, that, that's also why.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you why, and looking at this, you've got eight and two, but eight and one would be just fine, that gets you your nine.
It, it would be, but then I also think we'd have to request a variance for putting a parking spot back there, and.
Of course you do, but I, I can see one back there, but I definitely don't see two, you know what I mean?
And one would get us there, Mr. Chairman.
That's really right.
But I did wanna be honest.
No, I appreciate that.
We talked about, and we'd be glad to come back on.
October 1st, I think it is.
Really change. I would ask Mr. Chairman, if I can ask for one more thing.
Now you're pushing your luck, but go ahead.
My personal family situation makes it very difficult for me to stay asleep. I was able to do it tonight.
I'll pull you early.
Okay.
Absolutely, no, I'll absolutely, anytime in the future, please, just, if you can give me that heads up, especially if it's a family issue, let me know. People make requests all the time, and if I can help out, I'm happy to do that, so. Just grab the clerk before the meeting, or call her the day before, and she'll, she'll make sure I get a note, okay? Just grab the clerk before the meeting, or call her the day before, and she'll, she'll make sure I get a note, okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You could submit it by email to me, like, just give it to the manager.
So we're gonna, we're gonna make a motion to continue this?
Yes.
With those two stipulations until the next meeting, on October 1st? Right, everybody good with that? You guys good with that? Call the roll. Thank you, guys.
Mr. McElwach?
Yes.
Mr. Wilton, stipulations?
And Mrs. Fowett, stipulations?
Were you here for this case?
Yes.
Time out. Are you in opposition, or, um... Oh, okay, yeah, you're not done. I thought, I, I just, I didn't want to not give you an opportunity to speak on this, and it's gonna be a pile, but I'm sorry. Oh, I'm done, come on, we're done for the night. Sam said it'll wait till October 1st.
Mr. Gesono?
Yes, continue. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. I'm good.
Yep, so the next case, and I believe last case, right? This case number 9904, 674 Western Ave, petitioner Titus J.
Mr. Andrews?
Two shirts below.
Oh, here tonight.
Sam, one second. Come on up, ma'am, what do you have?
Two shirts below. I talked with Jamie Suruli, and she told me to come tonight.
She's in big trouble. Can I see? I'm so sorry you were sat there all that time.
That's okay. It's actually pretty simple. I...
Well, hold on, I'm not, I can't legally hear the whole thing, so I just wanna see what you've got here. Yeah, no, you submitted this, you submitted this on 99, and it has to be, I legally can't, I can just make sure you're doing the right stuff, but I can't...
She was able to take it on 99 because she hadn't sent out the necessary ads to the paper. And she said if I got it in on that Monday, she would be able to put me on today's agenda.
Yeah, this, this is, this is the ad that was in the paper for tonight's meeting. And you are not on it, ma'am. I apologize. Here's the ad that ran for this evening.
I believe you.
I bet you are on for October 1st, is what's gonna happen. And I'll tell you what I will do after you just sitting here all that time. You will be the first case called on October 1st.
Okay.
That's for sure. I do apologize. I'm so sorry. She must have missed, there was some miscommunication. I know it wasn't ours, but I absolutely do apologize. And you know what? You do have my promise that you will be the first person heard on, when you, when you do come in here. I am so sorry for that, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much.
I should start running down the case roster when we stop this in the beginning of the night to make sure. I've had that happen to me quite a bit in the, in the recent past. I do apologize, ma'am. You do have my apologies right again.
She sat here all night for the cases, isn't even on tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, God.
I can't legally take it, because... I can't legally, because it has to go out to notice to your butters and stuff, and it has to be posted in the paper, so... It has, otherwise, people could come in and appeal it, so... Thank you. Sorry, Sam, so you are...
I just don't even wanna say Titanic's last name.
674 Western Ave, you're up, Sam. Go for it.
First of all, I'm honored for what you've done in this room.
I looked, and I thought I was in the wrong room.
This is Titus Alawasulu. Titus' wife, several years ago, became a tenant at this address with her fashion, she called it Grace Land. I just, I don't think this guy even did it, Alice, but her first name is Grace. She has a retail fashion shop there. This property's been before the Board of Appeals on two prior occasions. One was in the 60s, when they made, and Mr. Kalman was on the board then, that they made the lot small. So I just want you to know, the lot got to be its present size by action of the Board of Appeals. The second thing that happened is, and I do remember Arthur Day, because I never knew what a florologist was. But Arthur Day was the guy putting floors, and he was Arthur Day's florologist. He came before the board when he bought the property, which was a two-family dwelling, to get permission from the board to put his business, which is a flooring company, on the first floor, and to keep an apartment on the second floor, and the board granted that. He passed away unfortunately. He stayed on the property. Titus' wife had the shock of, first of all, the opportunity presented itself, the purchase of property. And the business has been successful, and they wanna put a 322-foot square feet addition on the first floor to the store and make the store essentially a little bigger by 322 square feet. When Titus first came to me, I said, Arthur's difficult in that area, and then he said he has a variance, and I looked, and he's right. And again, I don't know who served on that board then, but that variance says that Mr. Day could put his business on the first floor, keep the apartment on the second floor with less than the required parking. A line I'm sometimes responsible for, which could mean anything, because less, all right? So I, I have come back and said something a little bit differently. In terms of number and design specifications, in the business district... There are only two requirements that relate to dimensions. The first is frontage, which this lot doesn't have, because it's non-conforming. It's got like 49 and 50. And that you don't have a building greater than five stories. So if we satisfy those dimensional requirements. With respect to parking, and this goes back to, you mentioned, the one above, that once you make a change to a building, even though you didn't have to have parking, when Mr. Day came in, apparently he had to have parking, but he got a variance for less. I don't know. I looked at the record. I can't see. There's nothing that tells me, there's no plan, there's... I just don't know what less is. So I settled on that we could provide two and perhaps three spaces to, because I am conscious of the fact that when I did look at that, it was back so long ago, that the parking lot at the other side was the First National Store. Remember First National? It used to be a food company? First National Store sent a letter to the board then saying, because apparently Mr. Day said to the board, he went to them about could he rent some spaces in that lot. And First National came back and sort of said, we just don't want anybody using our lot other than our customers. That's the only thing I could find in the record of the Board of Appeals that related to parking. So I asked Mr. Reed, and I actually confessed to learning something. Because I understood, I thought that Route 107, Western Avenue, was a state highway. That makes a difference about whether you can get a curb cut, because you have to go through Mass Highway to get a curb cut. But I'm told by the surveyor that this portion of Western Avenue is not a state highway. So that means that the ability to drive in and out of this, I don't have to go to the Mass Highway Department to get that ability. And so the addition is only to the retail area. It's a one-story addition. The contractor's name is Phil Brinte. He's away. And they've hired an architect, David Haliotis, to draw the one-story addition. But the purpose of it is to make it blend, to look like the rest of the store, and give Grace and Graceland a little more space, 322 square feet. And I think that clearly we can get two spaces. And there's a possibility, based on what Mr. Reed told me recently about the highway business, that if you look at the other side, I could get one more, perhaps.
Sam, let's, let's go away from the parking for a sec, 'cause I, I'm not really too concerned with that down there. Any issue? I, I look at, I look at the dimensions of this. On the back, at one point, you've got three foot five clear. At another point, you've got a foot. At another point, you've got two feet. I've got no problem with anything on this page, if you can get me that three feet walking around the back of the building. And the only reason why I say that, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, on the other side of the building, there's only a foot. You're right up on the line. So even for any kind of safety or emergency sake, you can't even walk out from behind the building to the front of the building. So I have no problem with an addition going on this building. I don't even care about the parking, Sam, I really don't. 'Cause down there, you've got a couple spaces that it hasn't, you're not really reinventing the wheel here. I would just like at least maybe that, that three, that three feet to be able to walk around the back of the building.
Yeah, the back is just, the back is low, so it's not a...
That's the first, the old first hand.
But there's, there's no delineation in the property? I didn't, I drove by, but I didn't go up back. I didn't get out and like walk out, so... There's no delineation between the two properties? There's a fence there, right? Yeah, so... Yeah, so all I'm asking for, Sam, is this, this is three foot five. I'll even take, if he can just keep a, a three-foot alley.
So we could...
In this alley.
So he shaves off a little bit, is that it?
Whatever it is, just to get that, 'cause you've got, Sam, you've already got two feet here, so it's only a foot less. And you've got one foot five here, so you're talking one foot five and a foot, just to get a solid...
Wasn't good in geometry.
Just a solid three-foot alleyway that, at least in any kind of situation, a police, a firefighter, ambulance, somebody can walk back there, you know, whatever was going on.
I did have a plan originally. That was half that size, but it didn't really, in other words, I squared the building. I had, well, squared the building.
Yeah.
But then I said, but that doesn't give us, you know, we already got, the building's the building.
You're talking, you're talking, I don't care if even if it's rounded, if it, if it jaw, however many times it jaw, just as long as it's a solid three feet that a human could, a police officer and a firefighter, and whatever could get through there in an emergency situation. I know you're grabbing for space. I know you're trying to maximize. The parking is what it is down there. You've had the same spaces. You're not re, you're not reinventing the wheel down there. I'm not...
Well, in that, that's, I was decent in algebra, so that changes the numbers in the formula, so I might be able to... Trade off. The old jigsaw that I told you. You move one piece on the board, it affects the other.
So if you mean, if you could take, if you could, if you could take a look at like that, I don't know...
But I defer to people who have greater skill than I in those areas, like Ralph Reed and Mr. Brinte, who's a builder, okay? And then Dave Haliotis is an architect. I rely on them. But I'm sure, could it be done? Absolutely. But that's their call.
That, that's why I'm asking, that, you know, I could save us a lot of time here, but, you know, we're talking...
That is what the stipulation is, yeah, that's what.
He's happy to do it.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's...
This is storage for you? That's all you're doing there?
Yeah, so the, so the foot off the here and there isn't gonna hurt anything, that's... I'm just thinking of, you know, of the, of the emergency services of the city, if the police are chasing somebody, whatever.
What we've done in the past, 'cause I don't want to hold you any later, is that if, if you require that I submit a plan, one of you or all of you can review and satisfactory, you can do it. I just gotta call. I'm not gonna have it done.
I'm good with that. Is the board good with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have a number on your building? A street number?
I saw somebody removed the...
Somebody's door.
Let me tell you.
I was going there today. I was about to take a visual of it, and apparently the number was not there.
I'm, I'm gonna make, put a petition at this board that every place we go, do you have to either have a flag out? We have nine cases. Do you know? All I did was park my car and walk to find out what I'm supposed to look at. And your place was how to park the car and walk up and down to make sure what was on each side of you to know that that's, that was the place.
Yeah, I figured me asking that question, because the number was on the top part, so...
Doesn't matter. It's your problem, man. Put in a door.
Let me, let's go through, let's go through the motions. Any other questions? Any other questions of the board? Anybody else here in favor? You guys aren't here in favor? You guys aren't in opposition? Nobody else is here in favor? I'm gonna close it in favor.
Very much on television on Tuesday night.
Any, anybody here in opposition? Anybody here in opposition? They're on, on, closing opposition. Wish of the board?
Make a motion to grant.
I'll make a, second the motion with the stipulations that Sam's gonna submit a plan showing the walkway.
The three feet.
Three feet, yes, ma'am.
Mr. McElwach, grant, with the three, three feet?
Yes.
Mr. Wilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Gesono?
Yes, to grant. Petitioner Grant, reading adjourned?